Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is November 28th, and this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee. It's about 7:00 o'clock, and we'll begin the agenda with public participation. Is there anybody who would like to address the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to good news. Dr. Rabinevich?
Yes, thank you. I have a number of items I'd like to mention this evening. First of which is that our RSO, or Resource Officer, School Resource Officer, Carl Baptiste, is back to work.
Outstanding.
And that is good news. And we want to thank Peter Sylvia for the work that he did substituting, but it's great to have Carl back. Second is that at Mine at Forest, the WBZ meteorologist, Joe Joyce, visited the grade five classes and did a presentation on weather, which I think is always timely, particularly with all the discussion.
Did he do that before or after Sandy?
Before, I believe, or just after, actually, but it was before Thanksgiving that he came. Last evening, the Wareham Foundation for Education gave out 15 awards totaling $7,185 to support various teacher projects, and if you check the press, you'll see a nice article on it. Each month, Mine at Forest has been celebrating the word of the month. September was all about the learning and what students expected to learn. October was respect, and November's word was responsibility. As students are caught demonstrating the selected monthly word, they write their name on a designated tag and place it on the bulletin board in the office front hall to see. We are grateful to Friendly's in Bourne, who donated some free kids' meal coupons to the students who earned a tag for demonstrating the word of the month and just basically for rewarding kids for doing the right thing. So that's all of the good news from Dr. Rabinevich.
Ken, Mike?
I guess I do.
We're missing Sandy tonight.
I have some good news that kind of fell into my lap, actually. Probably the second week of the school year, there were these kids canvassing my neighborhood for some raffle. It was the...
The one you sent them?
I was just going to tell everyone. I said, "Be sure to go see Mr. Sweat." I gave them their address, and I said, "Go down there, I'll be more than happy to give," right? Well, as it turns out, I won. I won like 50 bucks, and I'm just going to donate it, but I can't get ahold of...
We should split that.
Nope. I have to get ahold of Mrs. Frazier at the middle school, and I haven't been able to touch base with her, but when I do, I was just going to, you know, give it back and donate it back to the school.
Very nice.
Yes, he said, "Mrs. Frazier, the math teacher."
I just want to second and add a little historical context to the event last night for the Foundation for Wareham Education. I can remember when this was one of your goals. It seems like a long time ago, but...
It was.
Is it three, four years ago?
Yep.
Three years ago, I guess. And what is remarkable is that some of these awards were really relatively modest and yet couldn't be included in our budget. I mean, it has made a significant difference to a number of teachers to have this foundation exist, and I think it's something that we should all support, and I applaud the fact that it even exists. So, thank you. Let's move on to the minutes of November 7th. Does anybody have any additions or corrections?
Move approval of the minutes submitted.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0. The Action Committee met on Monday. We are actually moving along. We discussed the fact that despite the fact that the main military authority is an very interesting and potentially advantageous program to a number of school districts in Massachusetts, the age of our fleet has made it something that is just not the right time for us. We have too many vehicles that are just too old to be refurbished and desperately need to be replaced because they are costing us so much to maintain. So, it was, the committee was in agreement that we should say thank you, but no thank you to the military authority, and keep it in the back of our minds if our fleet ever gets to the age where it becomes appropriate to refurbish and hopefully get a new bus with still a very good engine and other mechanical areas that might last another seven years or so. With that in mind, we discussed the fact that there's approximately 55, well, there's precisely $55,000 left, excuse me, allocated to the Transportation Department by capital planning as approved by town meeting this past October that can be used to purchase vehicles, plus there's some residual, approximately $35,000, left from the encumbered amount from last year. That gives us a total of approximately $90,000. There's a significant caveat to that number that I will get to. It was felt that it would be prudent to buy two large buses and to eliminate from the fleet two of the 1998 vehicles, and that would hopefully significantly reduce the repair costs because they would come with our, we are told, with at least a one-year warranty. We theoretically could get a third for that $90,000. That remains to be seen based on the pricing and the age of the vehicles when the process is commenced. The problem with that is that that $90,000 is contingent upon us not running a deficit this year, and we won't know that until we get a little further into the year. The good news about the deficit, of course, is the town meeting approved the $134,000 from the McKinney-Vento money, and so that gets added to our operating appropriation and will therefore put less stress on the revolving fund, which might mean there'd be a few dollars left in the revolving fund that would handle the anticipated deficit before McKinney-Vento. That's all by way of saying, right now, I think, and Dr. Rabinevich, correct me if I'm wrong, we are pursuing two and maybe three, depending on the pricing we get associated with that, and depending on how the operating budget looks at the time that we have to make this decision. Is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement.
Okay. The second item on the agenda for the Action Committee was the RFP. I won't repeat, but there are four options that I've alluded to previously. One is the status quo, and then declining service from the status quo. The group, the committee, rather, voted unanimously to take the suggestions of Town Council, have the town administrator and the superintendent incorporate those suggestions as appropriate, and send out that RFP as soon as possible. The urgency is the fact that the capital planning representative, who also happens to be on the Finance Committee, feels that this needs to be a part of the FY14 budget process, the consideration of how much we put into the operating budget of the transportation. Whether we will have it back in time for consideration remains to be seen. It will certainly be back before April Town Meeting, but the School Committee will be voting on the budget at the end of January, so we'll see what that brings. On the other hand, I pointed out, and I don't think there's any disagreement, there are really two issues. One is privatization versus remaining in-house, and the second issue is, okay, if that's the least expense, if the lesser expense is the one we choose, then can we afford to provide services at the current level? That is something that will be much harder to achieve status quo because, let's face it, there are just insufficient dollars for the entire budget, and transportation, however important, is a part of a much larger budget. So, that is going to be, that is going to be on the agenda for our meeting on December, I want to say 17th.
I think that's correct.
December 17th, we'll be meeting again, and the first item on the agenda will be discussion of priorities as it pertains to the four options included in the RFP. And then the third item, a small item on the agenda, was Mr. Tetro provided us with a list of the buses that could be part of the joint visual inspection, but that's no longer necessary because we're not going to be using the main military agency. And finally, the amount of gas that we use in the various options. They ranged from about $250,000 worth of, I shouldn't say gas, it's fuel, because most of it's diesel, $250,000 in fuel down to a little over $100,000, and that is something that we would absorb because we don't have to pay taxes on it, and the private company would lower their bids accordingly because they don't have to pay for the fuel. As I said, we'll be meeting again on the 17th of December. Did I miss anything that I should talk about, Dr. Rabinevich?
No. The only thing that I, I'm not sure, it's not the Action Committee, but at the last school committee meeting, I believe, after your report, one of the members, I think it was Dr. Sylvia, asked about when we were going to be coming to the school board, and particularly since if we're going to be talking about the options of service, it seems, and as the budget process goes, we want that to be part of it, that maybe we should have that conversation, or at least the beginning of it, or a public hearing on it or something.
Yes. I do recall that. As a matter of fact, one of the members of the Action Committee asked how much we had discussed this issue, and I think since this, the FY14 budget process is concluding at your end very shortly, it probably would be good to put that on the agenda sometime before, certainly before the vote, and we'll have to think about the right timing for doing that.
Right.
In terms of a public hearing, that certainly, I'm not against public hearings at all, as you know. I think to some extent, we talked about it at the last public hearing related to the budget, but it may be worth another set of, another discussion, given the fact that we'll have even more information for people to digest. So, that's a good point. Okay, let's move on to policy review. I guess that falls in your lap, Mr. Flaherty?
It does, I guess. I apologize if I'm a little unprepared. I did just come here from a hospital. My dad was taken, and he's doing okay, but sorry if I'm a little unprepared here. We did meet, when did we meet, Dr. Rabinevich?
November 5th.
Oh, it's right there. Yeah, November 5th, and we went over several of the policies. I couldn't stay for the whole meeting, so I'll ask Dr. Rabinevich to pick up where I leave off here, but do we just go through each one?
Yeah.
All right, I guess I'll start with the automated external defibrillator, and do you guys, if you guys have the minutes for that, they're pretty detailed on what we discussed and what we changed, if anything.
I don't think I said about the packet. I just brought it.
But, I, no, I have this at home. I think you sent it.
I sent it to the policies.
Oh, okay.
It's okay, we have the policies.
But I know that you had, you had questions about the use of the word, "the Cape and Islands."
Yes, and I see that still there.
Yes, yes, and it says here in the minutes, "Dr. Sylvia explained that Wareham belongs to a consortium, and that is the reason why it is noted in the procedures."
Learn something new every day. So, our EMS department, it used to be, I was about to say Enterprise Fund, but it's no longer an Enterprise Fund, our EMS department belongs to a consortium of medical services, and that consortium has a medical director.
Correct.
Interesting, okay. Ken, any concerns, thoughts, questions?
Nope.
The only thing besides that, and the big question you asked, is you refer to something as, you refer to a position called the point nurse, and when you use a term in a policy and don't define it, I get a little uncomfortable. Can you define point nurse for us?
I can't.
Dr. Rabinevich?
A number of years ago, the Department of Education came out with one of its regulations that said that each school department with nurses needed to have a point nurse that was a point of contact, A, with our doctor, that is, the physician that we have as the school system's physician, as well as point of contact with the Department of Health and other questions. So, when I hear something about somebody has been told they can't come to school because of fifth disease, I call the point nurse, who then explains it to me and gives me the proper protocols from the Department of Health, and I then move on to the principals and so forth.
So, this is, this is not a term that we created, this is a term that the state regulatory body, Board of Health in this case...
Correct, and we have, we had a posting, we appointed somebody, and it happens to be the nurse here at the middle school.
So, everybody in the system knows who the point nurse is?
That's correct.
Okay, fair enough. Anything else on this policy? I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0. Okay.
Next one will be closing of a school building, and I'm just going to read directly from the minutes, which, again, are pretty detailed. "There was a discussion concerning that every attempt is made to return the students to their school prior to dismissal. It was also noted that the policy needed to be updated to delete the Ethel E. Hammond School as it is now closed. Dr. Sylvia discussed the clause under the Wareham High School protocol and suggested to include the progressive steps that should be followed," to read, quote, "Students will be sent to the middle school, and if circumstances make it necessary, students will be dismissed from that location." In the second line of the first paragraph, "The school department would notify," I'm sorry, quote, "The school department would notify parents/guardians and the media by electronic means of the situation and plans for the respective students," end quote. "It was suggested to use the same language for the middle school, but just to reverse where the students will be sent, middle school to high school."
Okay. Ken?
I'm fine with the changes.
Actually, um...
That's the only one, right?
Yeah, but per another agenda item, should we, should we leave the Hammond in there?
The agenda item talks about opening it, but not for children.
Got you, okay, all right, yeah.
Yeah, I thought about that, then I said it's not.
I, I'm going to be a little picky. It just drove me crazy. Throughout this, we use would and could instead of will and can. Would anybody have a problem, for example, in the opening, "The school department would notify parents and guardians." The policy says we will notify, so would anybody have any problem if we replaced would, which is about, used about a dozen times, with will?
Sure, I had no problem, no.
And we use could a couple of times, and I'd love to replace it with can. Seems like the tenses, it drove me crazy. If it didn't bother anybody else, I'll withdraw my objection, but...
No, that's fine with me.
I'm surprised that it passed muster without our English teachers who were present. They usually go through this with a fine-toothed comb.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so, Michelle, every time it says would, make it can, or make it will, and then there's two could's, one in Wareham High School and another in Wareham Middle School, and actually, another one under the cooperative. So, there's a total of four could's and a plethora of woods. As amended, I'll take a move to approve.
Will you need a motion, or could you ask for a motion?
I knew that was coming. Yes, I will need a motion.
I will make a motion to accept the policy with the changes as suggested by the chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0.
Next one is the charging student meals. Again, reading from the minutes. "Dr. Rabinevich would like to have the policy state that students are able to charge up to two breakfasts and two lunches, parentheses, meals. It was noted that all districts must handle the charging of stu-" "It was noted that all district schools must handle the charging of student school meals in the same manner. Students will be offered an alternate meal." Dr. Rabinevich suggested that the last sentence include that students changing buildings at the end of the school year should not carry their debts slash negative balances to the next school, and then a motion was made and passed.
But, that point you just made, unless I don't remember, I'm looking at it now, I don't see any reference to changing from building to building. I see it year to year, but not building to building. Did you mean to include that?
I think it was more of a procedure rather than in the policy.
Okay.
That, that sounds familiar.
Fine. Okay. Ken, any concerns?
No, Mr. Chair.
Let's take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0.
I think, I think this is where I had, I had to leave, but I mean, I can, I can keep going as, like this.
Sure, go ahead.
All right, sure. Public participation at school committee meetings. "Dr. Sylvia reviewed the suggested changes that were noted in the second paragraph, parentheses, changed to middle, changed to first and third, and quote, 'the town clerk's office,' add, quote, 'and on the district website.'" The addition of the comma was added to the sixth paragraph in the second bullet, and then it was motioned and voted on unanimously.
Ken?
So, the only addition was insert "and on the district website"? Mike? Instead of, oh, that was after town clerk's office, correct?
Yes.
They changed the location and the date. It's in Wareham High School.
I'll say with him, Mr. Chair.
The only thing I have is the third line, the last word is schedule, and I think it should be scheduled with a D.
It could say that.
I'm never going to hear the end of this.
Which paragraph?
First, very first paragraph, the third line, the last word.
Oh, framework of the committee, correct. Scheduled meetings, okay.
I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0.
Special education transportation. Last paragraph changed, changed the term director to manager, and it was just motioned and accepted unanimously.
Anything, Ken?
No.
I'm all set. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0.
Wellness program, wellness programs. Ms. Rotella suggested eliminating the second paragraph and replacing it with the following, quote, "In the absence of a district wellness coordinator, the charge, the charge of implementation and evaluation of this program shall lie with the director of curriculum and instruction in collaboration of school and of, in collaboration of school of principals and cafeteria managers."
You have that?
No, I don't have it in my packet.
I don't have that either.
I don't can, I can't find it.
Because if you look further in those minutes, it's brought, passed, brought back to the administration, so it's not at the committee level yet. It's back to the administration.
Oh, yes, I should, I should, yeah, I kept going there.
Good.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have, I'm looking, I don't have...
Yeah, I couldn't find it either, okay.
AIDS slash Acquired Immune Deficiency Syndrome, school attendance policy. It was suggested that on the second page in paragraph three, it should state, quote, "A or B" in the sentence that starts with "if A," that's it, and then they made the motion, it was seconded in...
Where are you, Mike, student attendance?
No, it says, "AIDS slash Acquired Immune Deficiency Syndrome, school attendance policy."
I don't have that one either.
You know, I have it in my, I'm looking at the mail that, in our packet, and it's in a different format.
That's exactly right.
It may not have opened for you.
I didn't even know it was a policy. It looked like some, it's, it's in a dot EN, it's a dot END file, which I'd never even heard of.
It's never a good sign.
So, why don't we hold off on that?
Yeah, I saw that, and I thought it was some mistakes I deleted.
I did too. And if you could send it out as a, something else...
Like a PDF, maybe?
PDF would be good.
You can text anything.
Anything, but I...
I don't know what it was.
Okay.
All right. Student attend, student attendance.
Got that one.
A distinction was made between the two policies of student attendance and student and student attendance nine through 12. This is the shorter policy on student attendance. Changes are in the second paragraph, comma after system-wide, comma after grade level. Motioned and accepted unanimously.
Got to get those commas in.
I told you, the English teachers were present.
Mm-hmm.
I'm all set. How about you, counsel?
Motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0.
And just to finish, the next meeting will be on Tuesday, December 4th, at 6:00 PM. If there's bad weather, the meeting will be pushed out to the following Tuesday, December 11th, at 6:00 PM. At the middle school, I take it, right?
Yes, middle school library.
Yeah, middle school library.
And all are welcome.
Yes, all are welcome.
How big is the committee now? Fair number, isn't it?
Yes, if everybody shows up, but unfortunately, not everybody does every time.
Yeah, and we've got parents, teachers, administration, it's a, it's a wide variety of people.
Do we have representation from Mine at now?
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either, yeah.
Okay, Dr. Rabinevich, your report.
We have a request from the WEA, actually, no, it's not from the WEA, sorry, from AFSMI, Council 93, that represents our bus drivers, custodians, and school cafeteria workers. These are three separate contracts, and they've asked to begin negotiations. So, what I'd like to find out from Mr. Fauntz and Rhonda, we can send out an email about what evenings would be best or afternoons to meet, and Mr. Flaherty for the cafeteria workers, and also Mr. Fauntz. So, if anybody, you know, if you send me some dates, I'm thinking after, probably, you know, once the new year begins, you know, and I'll send it to them, and we'll try to do these. They usually come in close, since they're all represented by the same representative, even though there are different wording in some of the contracts, but, you know, as far as financial and so forth, it usually comes in pretty close, so we'll try to do them similar.
So, just to be clear, there's three different contracts?
Three separate contracts.
And Ken and Rhonda is one, one...
They're on two of them, actually.
Oh, they're, they're on two of them, okay, fine, okay. And which one does Mike and Ken have?
Mike is on the school cafeteria workers with Kenny.
Okay, fine. All right.
Yeah, so, it'll be easy just to send an email with maybe a couple of dates for us to try to work around.
And I'll send one to Mr. Tabarez from AFSMI and ask him also, so we'll CC every, all three of us on the emails back and forth. Thank you. That's all.
All right. Moving on to acceptance of gifts.
I recommend the acceptance of a $100 donation from Patricia Long of Wareham towards the East Wareham Early Childhood Center Playground.
Thank you very much.
Move acceptance.
Second?
Oh, yeah, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0. Thank you very much. And finally, well, maybe finally, a discussion related to the Hammond School and I guess Everett Center as well.
Yes. In, in your packages, um, there is a draft memo that I prepared, um, to the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, um, from myself, um, basically asking that I would like to rescind my letter of August tenth, returning the Ethel E. Hammond School to the town. Um, the reason for this is, in the recent hurricane, the, um, front fascia board and gutter blew off of the Everett, um, Center. When, um, repair person came to put it back, um, we were told that the rafters, um, were rotted and that could not be put back and that, in fact, they, what they have done is they've put tar paper over it for this particular time, just as a stopgap measure. Um, for people who are aware or unaware, I'll just give a brief history. Um, two years ago, at town meeting, um, I brought up, um, a request to have the Everett Center studied, it is a historical building.
How old would you say the building is?
Um, nineteen eighteen, I believe.
Almost a hundred years.
That's right. And, um, it was moved, it was built, the original high school burned down that was part of in downtown center, it burned down, they built this new building on property owned by, um, the person that the Toby Homestead is named after. And then, at some point after that, it was moved to its current location. It served as a high school, and it was a kindergarten center, it has been an alternative school, and it has been offices as long as I've been in Wareham, twenty-one years, and I don't know how many years before that. Um, but we were aware that we had issues, in fact, when I went, um, to CPC to ask for funding, um, I showed them the money that we had spent over the years for repairing the roof, for repairing the foundation, um, a lot of money over the years spent in maintenance on that building, um, and that what we were looking for was to have a watertight building that we didn't get any, um, water through, and we were getting water into the basement through the foundation, as well as through the roof. And so, um, we have two bids, um, one of them in your package is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, another one came in at a hundred and ten, but it then added, um, options, um, that if, for instance, depending on where the wrought ends on the rafter, you may have to replace that, and therefore, it's gonna cost you more, um, and so forth and so on. So, and even that doesn't take care of, um, the basement issue, so.
Which is what?
Um, we have water coming in through the foundation, you need waterproofing, maybe French drains, um, as well as you have to, um, find a ventilation system so that you don't get mildew and mold.
If we decide to sell this building, you shouldn't show up.
Um, so at this point, in, I don't have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to spend on repairing the building, or a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, Hammond School is in condition that can be used now. Um, as a stopgap, we had moved the parent information center here to the middle school that is sharing another office space. Um, it would be nice to be able to give them their own location, as well as the offices that are currently at the Everett Center. Um, and whether the, um, Cedar or, you know, wants to then talk with us, because they were interested in sharing the building beforehand, um, I have had a conversation with the acting town administrator, who says he doesn't think it will be difficult to sell, since I'm still paying the heat for, and he doesn't want to accept the responsibility for the heat and light in the building. Um, we have turned the heat and light on at least every, I don't know if it's Tuesday night or Thursday night, but there's a group of Girl Scouts or Brownies that use the building, and I just couldn't say no, and so they're coming back. In the budget, there is still a custodial position that we didn't cut, which was gonna be like an in-kind trade for space in that building if Cedar had taken it over. Um, so, it's something we can use, it's in better condition, I'm not, you know, in the future, could it use new things? And I think it's a better building as far as what we can use it for immediately, as well as in the future, uh, for educational purposes.
Plus, it's a, can be a permanent polling site, too, now.
But, that is correct, and we did have voting there under both the last two elections. So, um, I'm asking for your, um, your opinions on whether or not I should send the letter, um, since I'm the person that wrote the letter originally. But I did come to you and ask about closing the building, so that's why I'm coming back, I thought it was the right process to go through.
Mike, comments, questions?
Yeah, this is to rescind the letter of giving it to the town, but we're not gonna turn around and say, "Okay, town, will you take the Everett School now?"
Not at this point.
Alright.
I will do some research on that, since it is a historical building, I may wanna get the Historical Preservation Commission and Committee, I think there are two separate organizations, involved, um, in whatever's gonna happen with that building.
Alright, what concerns me is, I think we were supposed to realize something like fifty-five thousand dollars in savings from doing this, so now, now what?
Um, the heat that I save at Everett and the lights at Everett will go to make up some of that, it may not make it all, because it's a much bigger building.
Yeah.
Um, I'm hoping that we may be able to, um, have some renters help with the overhead.
Renters in the Hammond?
Yes.
Okay.
We had earlier, um, through Student Services, had looked, an, an outside agency had looked at, that provide services to children, were interested in using a portion of it. Um, there are these, um, various educational programs from either Bridgewater or, um, Four Seas that were interested in using it, and so we would really push those so that we'd have a negative, that it's not gonna cost us anything.
Okay, thank you.
Ken?
Um, I think this is a, first of all, the letter never went out to the.
No, it hasn't.
Okay, that was my question, what was the response?
It hasn't been spoke checked or anything else.
Well, I think this is a, a easy decision, because you're dealing with safety issues too at, at Everett, and we have the opportunity to, to move some, uh, some people to the Hammond School, and also, I like the possibility that, that part of that school, we can reach out to organizations to rent, something like that. Um, I know you talk about the fifty-five thousand dollar savings, but if you throw that up against a hundred and twenty-five thousand to repair the roof, and what, what I notice is, your letter here said one fifty, and the estimate was one twenty-five, but you did clarify that by saying that didn't include the ventilation in the basement, am I correct on that?
Right.
Okay. Um, I'm all set, Mr. Chair, I, um, I support this.
So, as you, I think, was in the portion of your, a letter, this, there's also the implications for overall space usage in the, in the district, and I guess my only question, since I, I agree that this is the right thing to do, and I also suspect that if the, town wants to, um, dispose of a building, Hammond versus Everett Center, it'll be easier to dispose of the Everett Center for a variety of reasons, notwithstanding your great sales job. Um, but, the, um.
Sorry. No, I really do have something made wrong.
I believe you. Um, the, the question remains as to when do you think you'll be bringing the big picture recommendation to the committee?
Um, first, let me say that probably the last sentence or second to last sentence on here, where I go on about the middle school, was wrongly placed.
I was surprised it was there.
It was a, it was a flow of consciousness, I think, before, um, Thanksgiving, that I was turning this out.
Michelle, aren't you supposed to prevent those things?
Um, on occasion, I stay in the office after Michelle leaves, and one never knows what's gonna come off the typewriter. Uh, that really dates me, doesn't it?
Yes.
Typewriter. Um, so, you are correct, it is part of the overall space needs, so, the, um, people who are, are the two other members that are here this evening, that are part of our budget advisory, um, we have meetings next, I think, Wednesday and Thursday, is that correct?
Wednesday and Thursday, or, or Tuesday and Wednesday.
Yeah.
Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Fifth, sixth.
Alright, fifth, sixth.
I, I know Wednesday is all school all day, right?
Right.
Because we're gonna be doing that, then going to a school committee meeting.
So, as part of that, I have asked each of the principals to come with their space needs information. I've asked them to look at their class sizes and the number of classrooms they're using currently, and what it will be with the children that are in the system at this point for next year. From that, we will then build the need, um, of why we feel we need to move the fifth grade, um, to the middle school. And, um, it has been brought up and discussed at school council meetings, at both the middle school mine it, um, Deacon's, I believe, and actually at the high school as well, because one of the meetings that I attended, there's a parent who happens to sit on all three committees, she's got children at all three schools. And so, um, we're beginning to hear concerns, and I wanna put all that together, and then come to the board so that we have an open conversation, and perhaps another public hearing of sorts on the issue, so the committee hears from parents about what their concerns are as we move forward with this.
Interestingly, there, it, the budget public hearing, which precedes the vote, um, theoretically could serve that purpose, the only problem with that is, that's, that's a point where you've already made your recommendations, and you may want to be influenced in your recommendations by the public on both transportation and space, so if we were gonna do this, and we wanted it to impact our deliberations on the FY fourteen budget, it sounds like it should be scheduled early in January.
We have three meetings, I believe, in January, where, the first meeting is where I present the budget, and I bring in, uh, principals and others to be present, which may be an opportunity to do the hearing.
First part of that, yes.
At that point, yes. And then, because we haven't made any decisions at that point, it's just, you know, for some, for some of the committee, it's their first crack at hearing it, if they did not attend the full day, uh, budget meetings with the finance committee and the advisory committee.
I think that's, I think that's a good idea, put those two topics specifically.
Yeah.
Onto the, uh.
And that, maybe it can be a, that's all the business we do is budget, but first, you know, we do non-net and then net.
Right.
And have them speak about that, as well as the, um, whole issue about movement.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good idea.
Space needs.
In the meantime, we can make sure that people understand the, the significance of it, so that they're prepared for comments and questions.
So, you're talking the January ninth meeting, which is the first meeting?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
So let's, let's be clear to those people who are, are, are listening and watching, uh, we're talking about two very important issues being, uh, made into a public hearing on January ninth. The two issues, uh, would be, um, how much service we provide, uh, with respect to the transportation of students. Uh, the status quo, of course, is, um, K through twelve, but it only, by law, it only has to be K through six, two miles or further, um, and anything in between, that, those levels of service. And then the second issue for, for, related to the public hearing would be, what grades basically are in what schools, in essence? Um, and that's no, no small issue for, for parents, I'm sure. Um, that's a tentative idea, but I think it's one that's, uh, growing on all of us, so I think people should, should plan on, uh, not happening unless you hear something to the contrary from us. Um, anything else on that subject?
No.
Okay, is there any other business that the committee would like to, uh, bring, any member would like to bring in front of the committee?
Um, yeah, just one thing.
Yes.
What is, do you know, uh, Dr. Rubenovich, the status of the bids for the high school roof?
I do.
Since we're on the subject of roofs and leaks and floods.
Um, first of all, I'd like to give credit to Michelle. Michelle, um, as you may or may not be aware, the town does not have a purchasing agent, therefore, we.
I'm available.
Serve as the purchasing agent, and, um, so, um, I sat down with, um, the template, put in all the relevant information, um, we have a contract with a gentleman, um, who is putting together the specifications, who is not gonna bid on the work. Um, and we have gone, and it is now in the central register, and, um, we're just waiting for the, uh, prevailing wage information to come to us, but we have a pre-bid meeting. Michelle, do you remember the date on the pre-bid meeting?
Soon.
Yes. Next Tuesday, is it?
I think.
I think. Um, so, we hope that we'll be able to, one week later than that, have the bid opening. And that.
It was the fifth and the twelfth.
Right. So, um, by the last meeting in December, um, I will come.
Which is, which is the nineteenth.
And hopefully be able to ask you to, um, accept a bid, but it has to go to the town administrator, and therefore, the approving authority on this is the Board of Selectmen, so they will have to vote on it.
So the goal of trying to get it done over the holidays may be a pipe dream, may not quite work.
Right, but we're trying.
I appreciate that.
Um, we've, um, because the first initial part of the work is to vacuum off all of the rocks, the, um, that roof design, um, the membrane is not affixed to the roof, they have ballast that holds it on, um, which were these cinder blocks that got disintegrated, and so they then put all those rocks up there. So there are tons of rocks on the roof that have to be removed before you get to take off the membrane, and, which is the noisy part of the job that we are hoping to get done, um, during vacation and before any major snow. Um, so, we'll go in as fast as we can, um, and that's what happens when we get approval at the end of October, rather than July.
Right.
Well, hopefully, that, uh, the urgency could be, um, someone can notify the Board of Selectmen, um, because I, ideally, you wanna do this over school vacation, um, Christmas vacation, when the students aren't in the school, because I don't know what the disruption will be, no, no use of the gymnasium during the, uh, construction, um, so hopefully, we can relay that message to try to get this done before the end of the month.
I wonder if protocol requires the Board of Selectmen to get it after we've gotten it. I mean, is there any theoretical reason why they couldn't take their vote before we've taken our vote?
Right, that, actually, I don't really believe the school board needs to take a vote.
Exactly.
It's, the town administrator, um, will make the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. And it could move fast, but I just have to, being realistic, um, when you open, and Ken knows this from his work, when you open sealed bids, and if they are close, um, you have to then look into the work, history, and reputation of the companies that are bidding, and doing a good job with the references is almost as important as getting good specs to make sure that we don't have any leaks when this is done.
And we don't wanna go back to the citizens five years from now and say, "Oops."
Absolutely not, so, um, it, it, it's a process that's gonna take a little bit of time, but it has my full attention.
Thank you. Any other business? Is that on hand?
Um, just, uh, just FYI, um, I didn't send it out yet, because I have to get some more information for. more information for you, but, um, approximately September, I think, we get a call from the EPA about an underground tank that we had, and when I received it, I thought they were talking about the gas tanks that used to be underground at the middle school, that we used to use to, when the bus garage was in the middle school. Um, but when we dug a little deeper, and they brought up, we found that, no, they were talking about a two thousand gallon, um, tank that lives at the high school underground, and has been there for, since it was built twenty-three years ago, for fuel for their generator. And the trouble with underground tanks is that they rust, and they leak, and so, you have to have them inspected. I've been in that office now, five years, and then four years, nine years, never heard of this tank.
Yeah.
But, um, yes, the, the custodian or previous school administration knew about it, um, but, make a long story short, we had it, um, inspected as we needed to by regulation, um, and we have to either fix it or remove it.
Because it's leaking?
No, it is not leaking, but, uh, the test shows that if you just leave it, it will, and therefore, um, the remediation is gonna cost us about eighteen thousand dollars, we're going to have to dig up the tank, drain off the oil, the fire department has to be part of the process, the, um, area has to be then put back, and then, we purchase a one thousand above-ground tank, which you can inspect a lot easier, and, um, make sure it's a double hull and so forth, the technology has improved in twenty-one years. Um, but that's another place that, you know, our building and grounds, um, revolving accounts, you know, it's gonna pay for it, but when, when we get the next thing, and you see that it's almost zero, that's where it's gonna come from, it's another one of those things we just didn't know about to, um, put into the budget, and it comes up, and you have to, I mean, you know, the EPA doesn't fool around.
Having dealt with this, that eighteen thousand would seem trivial, if we had, if it was leaking.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean.
That's exactly right.
It's right next to the water, too, right? I mean, yeah.
Yep.
If you, if you actually have one leaking, it can be a catastrophic mess to fix environmentally.
So.
Okay, thank you for the information.
Just the day of the life.
Yes. Anything else? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So soon?
I'm sorry, I, I apologize to all those people who would like us to continue, but we are.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
We are adjourned, thank you very much. You're welcome, Bruce.
Ken, Ken actually bet eight seconds.